I know. I agree.
How's it going?
Good.
You're good?
I'm good.
You have a schedule, huh? What are you doing here?
You got an extra schedule?
Agenda number.
Yes. I do want to do it. Very. Yes. Good.
Good Christmas, Christmas years. Everybody's healthy again.
Uh, now we have a shooting of suicide. No. So they could keep it really fast. Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Morning.
Morning.
Hello, Scott.
It's nine.
Wait for Gary. Camera on.
Yeah, it is.
That one's on?
There's no light on.
Okay.
Listen, you know, it is never just as vast. I got a phone call from, uh...
You technically can start with that.
Why don't we get along this here? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to make a recommendation with our agendas today that right after we called a order, before we do anything else, that we would have a line item to approve the agenda. Most of our other meetings that I attend all have that. I think it's proper protocol. So if we need a form of a motion, I would make that motion that we add that line item to approve the agenda.
I don't think you can make a formal motion on it because it's not an agenda item, but we can add that to the agenda. I don't think it has to be a motion, but it can be noted in the minutes as such and we can...
I'm good with it. Not... okay. Very good. From there, if you're going to the minutes, which I interrupted you, and make a motion that we approve those.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number three, point.
Chairman. You had asked if I would do it. I don't have a problem with that. But just like previous, there's gonna be a few that I miss in person that I usually call in. I have no problems taking it on.
Second that.
Did I make a motion on my...
That wasn't a motion.
Is that a motion, Gary?
Yep. I'll second it.
Okay.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Now it's up to you, bud.
Okay, well, now, there you go. Item four, appoint a vice chairman. You wanna take that on or you wanna step back?
I'll step back.
Okay, Gary? You're the man. I'd make a... well, you wanna make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to appoint Gary Vershank as vice chair.
Okay, and I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye. Are you abstaining, Gary?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Okay, next is item five, authorize auditor to issue warrants per Iowa code 331.506 and execute an ACH and financial agreement for 2024. This is resolution 24.1. Okay?
Make a motion to approve it.
So I have a look at it. Moved by Tracy, seconded by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Then you have one for to authorize treasurer to execute those. Okay. Need a motion to authorize treasurer to execute the ACH agreement for 2024.
Make a motion to approve resolution 24 dash two.
Oh, you know, the first one was by resolution. I apologize.
Yep.
We needed to vote individually, so primar aye.
Seamen aye.
Vershank aye.
Okay, and now you made a motion for item six, the treasurer to execute that.
Yep.
Do you wanna second it, Gary?
Second.
Okay. By resolution, primar aye.
Seamen aye.
Vershank aye.
And Grace, you are next.
Thank you. Morning. Um, just wanted to make you aware, it's the NACO 2024 conference this March. It's public health, healthcare, emergency management. It's in downtown Cleveland at the Huntington Convention Center. For this conference, airfare, like car, train, hotel, meals and registration is all able to be billed for the core part of our FEP grant, so it's reversible. Just kinda wanna make you guys aware that I'll be out of town and then, yeah, that's reversible by our FEP grant. I have a couple other public health colleagues from Service Area Six who will be going as well. So just kind of a good opportunity to learn more about public health and emergency management. Come on.
In order of those dates, please.
Yeah, so it's, the conference is the 25th through 28th. That's a Monday through Thursday, but I'll be leaving Sunday, so Sunday to Thursday I'll be out.
Of January?
Of March.
March.
Yep, not for a little bit yet, but just wanna put it on everybody's radar.
And you said, when you were in the office, you said, "We'll be paying for the airfare next week." You'll see that in the claims, but the FEP grant, you said it might take until like...
So, so, yep, so it'll be on the March portion of our billing for FEP and then usually those checks do take a little bit to come back. But, yeah, it's all covered for travel, hotel, meals, all that good stuff.
So you guys will see that first, yeah?
Yeah, we got a little more coming.
Yep, thanks. But, yeah, anything else or... awesome.
No problem. Do we need to take formal action on this? Just discuss it, but don't we normally approve that?
Um, I didn't know. I told Grace because I didn't know what was going on with her board. The current handbook says out-of-state travel needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. I don't know if you guys needed to make a formal approval on that since she has her own board, but she doesn't currently, so I didn't, I told her to...
Those out-of-state by the handbook.
But if they have their own boards, they don't, so I didn't know how that handles. So I told her to come and talk to you guys.
I think we would be wise to go ahead and approve that.
I have no problem.
I don't either. Is that your motion to approve that?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Sue, you are up.
Okay, um, I have a few things. Um, the amended retirement policy.
Here's the policy itself and then it would have to be approved by resolution and then there's two... I forgot to, you just really need the signature page, so there's two copies of that and then just the one copy of the resolution.
Okay.
We discussed that a few weeks ago, changing that health insurance contribution to 75% for retirees, so it's just bringing that for formal approval.
About the middle is where it says about 75%.
I think it was paragraph four.
Yeah. Sometimes you feel like that, don't you? Like a roadrunner?
Yeah.
You guys good with that? So we need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
And it's by resolution, so primar aye?
Seamen aye.
Vershank aye.
Can I make a comment about that?
Of course.
So first and foremost, thank you for at least considering making changes from what it was originally put in. I would like to make a suggestion, though, also as a person who's been on county insurance for a long time and also had to look at this in my retirement as a benefit, I can get a much better deal out on the open market because I can do a husband and wife instead of a family. And that, I guess I would ask on my way out that you would consider maybe offering that to county employees. I can imagine there's a lot of husband and wives without children that they don't need to be paying for a full family plan anymore. That if we could offer a husband and wife or an employee spouse, you as a county would probably save money and so would the employees. So I guess I'd just ask if you would look at doing that.
I think that's an insurance issue that maybe this coming year we can see if they offer that. All I've seen is just single or family. Never hurts to ask. Good points, Scott.
Maybe ISAC doesn't offer it, but there are, I know those plans are out there in the... But maybe ISAC doesn't do it. I don't know, but it'd be nice to look at because there could be savings. Thanks.
Thank you. Continue, non?
Yep, I have, I'm gonna have to get it to you after this because I didn't... With the new chairman, so I need to get you the resolution after this. But basically it's for a collections officer and that is starting January 8th in the county attorney's department and, um, would be a salary of 35,750. So requesting approval to fill that vacancy and hire that individual by the name of Angela Becker for that role. So again, I gotta give you a resolution that has you as chairman, Rick. But here are the details. We just wanna look at it, but that's not below the sign.
Do you have the first page?
It went that way someplace. So do we have a motion for hiring this collection officer?
It's gotta be by resolution.
I get that. Do you have a resolution number or such?
It would be number four.
Okay.
Okay, and I will make that motion to hire Angie Becker on the collection for the county attorney.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so by resolution, primar aye?
Seamen aye.
Vershank aye.
And then you'll get the paperwork for us to sign. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next thing I have is discussion of the Wellness Day and the Health Insurance Incentive. So, um, that is something that gets approved or, I guess, requested every year. I think last year was the first day of the Wellness Day. We had 55 people that qualified for that and I think it's a positive incentive from what I hear from people to meet the health insurance, the goals of the ISAC Wellness Program by doing the physical and the assessment is how you qualify for that. What you've also approved in the past is $15 a month towards discount on health insurance and I wanted to ask if you might consider raising that to $20 a month. I just ran some rough numbers, so this year we qualified for a 2% discount. That is a savings of $35,604. There wasn't a lot of communication about the, I think about the wellness because of HR leaving mid-year and I just think a lot of communication kinda got stopped. So when I came in September and started promoting it, 35 of those met that after in the fall. So I think the communication, if we increase that and hit the ground running in January, we could get higher numbers in the discount and I think we could achieve the 5%. If we got the 5%, rough numbers show a savings of $89,000. I'm confident we can get above 2% and I really think we might be able to get the 5%. So that additional health insurance savings for staff, I think, would be attractive. They get $15 right now. It's taxable, so they're really getting $1384 a month. So it would just be, you know, something a little bit more attractive. Rough numbers show that if we had 75% participation, it'd be a cost of $19,000. Again, if we get the $89,000, still good discount. But just wanted to see what you thought about the Wellness Day and then bumping that health insurance discount up to $20 a month for everyone who participates in those, meets those two goals of the program.
I don't have any issues with it.
So either. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Great.
So is that a motion to...
Yes, it is.
To make that change?
Yeah.
Second. Okay.
Thank you.
So all those in favor of approving the Wellness Day and an extra $5 on that incentive? Please say aye.
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 I got my work cut out to deliver the 5% discount now, don't I?
Yep.
Sheriff, you're gonna help me with your staff.
All right.
Um, okay, what else do I have? Oh, I just have Scott's official retirement letter. Tracy's saying no. I don't know if that's allowed.
Can I write a picture following here where the radios are up and running?
No. No.
And it still coincides with the six months because when did you turn that in for the...
28th, 9th? I don't know. Was my date on it?
Yeah. I just don't want in the minutes it documented, like you turned it in.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, I've had this...
But I'm just saying it should probably be publicly noted that you turned it in before, so it coincides with the six months. I don't want formalities to screw them up.
Well, the board formally acknowledges your retirement reluctantly, so... Not that you're reluctantly retiring.
Yeah, I received that on 12/28.
You have a copy of this?
Uh, yes, or you gave, we have a copy, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Chair, send this back.
Send it back to her, please.
So I have a question related to that with the health insurance incentive. So if I go and get my Wellness Day between now and when I retire in June and the new employee starts in June, do they also have to do it to get that discount? Or am I considered done with the emergency management?
So you're asking if you...
So if I go do my wellness check, which gets us towards that deal and upload my stuff on the portal, is emergency management then considered done? Or does a new employee also have to do it after they start July 1?
Well, I would hope the new employee would also do it. Do they have to? No, but I would think they would want to to qualify.
Depends on...
Right, yeah.
Depends on where they come from, if they've already done something or where they're coming from.
Right.
So I'm just curious if...
Yeah, it's a good question of how they look at our numbers as far as percentage. Yeah, I guess I don't know how they would do that factoring in turnover rates or whatever.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, good question.
Need to know what to tell them.
You're gonna tell them wellness is important.
Okay, I can do that. Very good.
Thank you, Scott.
Take care, Scott.
Okay, I think my last one was request for out-of-state traveling for the National PELRA Conference. So that's an organization I joined. It's public sector labor relations and HR people from throughout the US and they have an Iowa chapter and so they have a national conference in Savannah, Georgia in April. And this has a lot of good stuff about, you know, HR and public sector collective bargaining. They haven't discussed all the breakout sessions yet, but just also just good pick and brains of other county employees and just kinda helping to educate and learn things that I can bring back here. So just requesting permission for travel for that.
And what are those dates, please?
Dates are April 7th through 10th.
We would need a motion to approve that.
Okay, so with you.
What's that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving her out-of-state travel, please say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. I think that was all on my list today.
Okay, adopt construction evaluation resolution.
So I talked to Bart because in, we have not adopted that resolution since 2021. And so I reached out to her and she said she is recommending the board not approve a new one. You will need to make a formal motion as such because I will need to send notice to the DNR if that's what you are wanting to do.
I'm a little fuzzy. I don't remember that far back why we haven't been doing that.
The reason why is the DNR...
It's with the manager management plans, right?
Yeah, I don't wanna pick on anybody specific, but, yeah.
Yeah.
They have to apply for a permit from the DNR in Des Moines. Excuse me, and then after they apply for the permit, that would get sent to us to either okay it or deny it, but if we even deny it, the DNR would override, could override.
Yeah, okay.
So we're just stepping out if we don't have no authority on it.
Okay, so do we even need to take action?
You do need to take action because I need to send that to the DNR that you are opting out of it. So you do need a formal motion saying you are...
Motion to opt out.
To opt out.
Is there a formal motion?
Gary, you wanna do that?
Move we opt out of the evaluation resolution for 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, establish a schedule for supervisors' meetings for 2024.
Nobody has any objections. I'll have the supervisor meetings on Tuesday at 9:00. Just like the voicemail.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. So Gary seconded by Tracy to remain the same as we have been doing for Tuesday, 9:00 AM for our meetings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we gotta designate supervisors and alternate to represent Benton County on county and regional boards.
So that's your ISAC, your central juvenile detention.
The ones that we have been on previously, so any changes, fellas? Anything you wanna change?
You're gonna take the health board note, right?
Correct. I think we changed that here.
The one thing that you did change from last year is the Heritage Area Agency on Aging where Gary Vershank was on there, but Sarah Wagner was appointed. So that's a regional board that you guys had, but you would, I don't know if you wanna, if you're making an overall motion that was not a Board of Supervisor one. It's one that you guys pointed someone else for because that board came in and requested.
Sure, okay. So do we need to make an exception for that? So do we need to make an exception for that?
I would, just so it's noted as such that it is Sarah not, if that's who you're wanting to reappoint, instead of the regular board.
So we'd need a motion that we would.
Yeah, let's wait on that one with Sarah.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll just wait on that. There's things going on, we'll just wait on that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to just.
For the supervisors.
Supervisors, stay what boards that they've been on, stay on that.
Okay, all right.
Second that.
Okay, and then we'll circle back around to the other one.
Yeah, another couple weeks down the road when we know what's actually going on.
Yeah, that makes sense, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we've got a statement of non-issuance of certificate of occupancy. Sign new statement of non-issuance of certificate of occupancy. Thank you.
And you just wouldn't need to sign that, Rick.
Okay. Benton County is currently, has not currently adopted building codes and does not perform inspections of structures located in unincorporated areas of the county. Any changes, fellas?
Nope.
So we're gonna need to approve this?
Make a motion for you to sign it, the chairman.
Make a motion, the chairman signs certificate of occupation of 2024.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint ADA coordinators for 2024.
The current ones are Haley and Myron.
Any issues, fellas?
No.
Is there gonna be a motion to appoint them again?
I would move that we appoint Haley and Myron to the ADA coordinators.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item fourteen, I would recommend that we table that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This is the appoint the members to the Board of Health. Item fifteen, appoint members Benton County Development Group.
You can see on the packet that I gave you, I stapled that one application that we received. This is a board that is all up at once, so it would be a complete new boards.
With that, everyone has been contacted, the only one that's not heard back from is Heather Underconnect, but all others have agreed to do this. I can't imagine she wouldn't, so with that, I'd need a motion to appoint the current board again, subject to Heather agreeing, of course.
Which one's that, Greg?
Benton Development Group, it's now federal order, so it should be the first.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Gary made that motion, Tracy seconded to reappoint the members to Benton Development Group, subject to Heather agreeing, of course. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we've got item sixteen, appoint members to Benton County Land Use Adjustment Board.
There's only one up this year, and it's a five-year term.
I called him and talked to him, and he's willing to serve on again.
Doug is?
Yep.
Okay. So is there a motion to reappoint Doug?
Yep.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we've got the Conservation Board, number seventeen, appoint those members. And.
There's only one member up as well.
That's Denny Rando?
Yep.
Okay, has anybody talked to him?
It's a her, and she is done.
She's done?
Yep, she does not, she wants the job, but she cannot, she does not have time.
The time, okay.
We got four applicants.
So we've got applicants here that we were given?
Yep. You guys had a cancel to them?
I have.
I have as well.
You have not, Gary?
I have as well.
Okay. Is there any recommendations?
I'll make a motion to reappoint this Samantha Hunter.
Okay. Part of the Benton County Conservation Foundation.
Correct.
Okay. So that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Second, Gary?
Yep.
Okay. So all those in favor of appointing Samantha Hunter to the Conservation Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. EC Cog, number eighteen, appoint members to the EC Cog Board and Committees. Okay, we were told Mark Pidgenott does not.
Yeah, that's the second one, the second paragraph. First one is the Board of Directors.
Okay.
Some of them didn't get highlighted in the yellow.
Yeah. Anybody had a, I don't know if any applications came in?
There was none.
There was none, okay.
But I would make a motion that we'd appoint Bruce Visser for Atkins, the mayor, to take Dave Fish's spot.
Okay.
I've talked to him, and he's willing to serve on that position.
Good.
Second.
I think you can just do one total.
That's what I thought.
Motion at the end.
Okay.
So in the second one, you would need a point for Mark, and then there's a vacant one for an alternative.
Yeah, we never have had one.
An alternate, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going off of what EC Cog gave me.
Technically, the only one we gotta replace is Mark.
Correct.
Right.
And that was a new one on me, I did not contact anybody, so.
We just got notified that this morning.
We'll let that go.
Makes sense.
You know, I made a motion for Bruce.
So you wanna table the other one?
Yes.
Okay, as far as Mark's reappointment?
I got some ideas who would be good at that, but I didn't want to stick him with God unless I'm gonna serve.
After you visit with him, would you get it on the agenda again, please?
Yep.
Okay. So we got a motion to replace Dave Fish with Bruce Visser?
Yep.
Visser, it's V-I-S-S-E-R.
Yep.
Noel?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Visser, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 So you also have Myron for the transportation, and Dean Verba for the PTAC, and then you guys for the other one, so.
They'll stay on.
You're, so it wasn't just Bruce, it was for reappointing the rest?
I would say.
The remainder?
Yeah.
Okay, you, in your motion, you said Bruce.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I did say that, so.
All right. Okay, so you amended your motion.
Yeah. What do you miss though, beating up?
Who? Myron is 2023.
Myron is, and Dean is.
Look at the one I gave you today with the application, you know, with all the stuff.
What's different to the one regional?
Well, I'm just like, so you're looking at the same thing. EC Cogs was a little different, so I don't know if that was the change or what, but yeah, you have Myron, Dean, and then you have Mitch McDonough, his, because this one is supposed to be elected, that one, so I don't know if you need to make an amendment, because Mitch is no longer the mayor of Nevada.
Yeah, I don't know, Gary is, isn't he?
Yeah, so I don't know if you need to make an amendment to that, because that portion from EC Cog says it has to be comprised of two elected officials. So, because Rick's an alternate on that one, and you're one, Tracy, so I don't know if you need to.
You've got Gary's phone number, don't you?
I do, too, but.
We can call him after the meeting.
But I don't know if that one you need to make an amendment on, because Mitch is no longer.
Okay, with your motion, you wanna amend that to remove Mitch McDonough?
Okay.
Because he's supposed to be elected, all right? And then afterwards, we'll give Gary a call, see if he'll be willing to take his place.
Okay.
Second.
All right, move seconded with those amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That's a one-year term, so.
Yeah. Have you had anybody state that they don't want to be there?
I have not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reappoint them all.
Okay?
Second.
All right, motion by Tracy to reappoint everyone with the eminent domain commission. And seconded by Gary, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we've got the fire districts, benefited fire districts.
Yep. I talked to three of them, and they're all willing to serve.
Okay, who did you not get?
Dean Warner from Van Horn.
Okay.
That number that's on the sheet is disconnected.
Yeah, I ran into quite a bit of that.
I did, too.
It's, it's tough.
I did, too.
Dean is a township clerk as well, so I wouldn't think it would be an issue.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, yeah. A motion to reappoint.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint all four of them, District four, three, two, and one.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Historical preservation is, there was two applications, so.
Not visited with Wendy, you haven't visited with Wendy, have you?
No, I haven't.
Gary?
No.
Okay.
I talked to Robert.
And I've talked to the second applicant, Jimmy Wheeler, he would enjoy being on there. You should have his application.
Yes, I do. My question is, can we appoint one more?
No.
No?
I don't believe so. I'd have to look back in it, but I, I wouldn't add to it at this point without knowing anything additional.
Well, they're not there, yeah.
I mean.
You've got six now. Okay, well, I guess we just need to contact, try to contact Wendy.
Well, I see you'll put it down the road until next week or now.
I don't think we should. So you wanna table that one?
Yep.
That's your motion? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling the historical preservation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll try to get a lawyer, okay. Okay, item twenty-two, I think we should table item twenty-two as well as thirty-six at this point in time.
Making that a motion?
That's my motion, that we table it.
Okay, I'll second that, twenty-two and thirty-six.
Correct. After we get thirty-six, thirty-six, after we get the commissioner, then I think we should then appoint those four that are vacant, okay? Okay, so that's motion seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I got my papers all in order here. Okay, twenty-three, the Pioneer Cemetery Commission, appoint members.
I've talked to Brenda, and I talked to Clint, and they're both willing to serve. I have not talked to Rose.
How did you get a phone number for Clint?
On my phone.
Oh, well, that works. Yeah, I don't know how we get hold of some of these people, no phone numbers listed.
Well, I think sometimes when you guys appoint, we don't, you know, new ones, we don't get their phone numbers, when they don't have a, you know, application for these boards.
Sue, could you send out some sort of mass text, email, or whatever, to committee members and ask that they make sure we have their updated phone numbers and contacts?
We, our office does these committees.
Okay.
So I can contact the chairmans and stuff and ask them for that.
That'd be great, I mean, somebody, someplace needs to get this stuff updated. I was going through the airport one, and wow, it's, numbers changed, so, okay. Well, then we probably need to table that one as well.
Well, you could turn around and appoint the two that are willing to serve, that I've talked to.
Oh, the only one is?
Rose.
Rose, you could not get a hold of? Okay. Well, is that your motion to appoint those two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Then we'll have to circle back around to this, okay. All those in favor of appointing those two, Brenda and Clint, to that Pioneer Cemetery Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Solid Waste Commission.
Okay, Erica Hodgson, she resigned, if you remember, sent us a letter.
Correct, correct.
So she's off there. A former member from Keystone contacted me a week ago, been willing to serve.
That would be?
Mike Seek.
Seek?
Yes.
S-E-E-C-K.
Used to be the mayor of Keystone.
Okay.
And I would make the motion to appoint him as a board member at large.
And with you being on the landfill commission, you haven't heard anybody else state that they don't want to be reappointed?
No, I asked them at the last meeting, and everybody thumbs up.
All right, so your motion was to appoint Mike Seek at large, position for Benton County Solid Waste.
Reappoint everybody else that's on the list.
As well as everyone else, okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we've got zoning.
Okay, I've talked to three of them.
Okay, which three?
Top three, Dan Kessler, Nancy Jensen, and Steve Thompson.
Okay.
I did not talk to Larry, but I'm pretty sure he'd be willing to serve.
I know Larry, I'm sure he would be.
Yeah, I never got around to calling him.
Okay. You. You would?
But I'd make a motion to reappoint them four.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Appoint members to the Airport Bell Plain Regional Zoning Board. Again, don't have a phone number for this, Rob Richter.
I can get that.
You can get that?
Can you email that to me?
Okay. And John Stegelmeyer, there's no problems being on the other boards, but he did not want to be on Bell Plains. He said he doesn't like traveling much anymore. So that one, we're going to have to find for Bell Plain. Any thoughts?
So you have to table the regional, the Bell Plain?
I think so, the Bell Plain. You'll give me a phone number?
Yep.
Then I'll get ahold of Harold. And Gary, could you search somebody up for that Bell Plain area? It's kind of your neck of the woods.
Yeah, I could beat up.
Okay.
No problem.
All right.
You guys going to motion for that table?
I'll make a motion that we table that appointment on the Bell Plain Regional.
I'll second it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Airport. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, airport, Eastern Iowa zoning.
John and Myron.
John was good with that, and I lost my place on this thing, sorry. And Myron was as well, I believe, when I visited with him, so make a motion that we reappoint John Stegelmeyer and Myron Prezak, Eastern Iowa zoning, airport zoning.
And how about Deb Christensen?
It's, that's a different.
Yeah.
That's different?
Yep.
Yeah, she's on Vinton Airport Adjustment.
Next time I can break them up for you, so it'll be easier.
All right, I'll second it then.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vinton Adjustment Board for the airport, and that is Deb Christensen, and I did not visit with Dave. But I don't think he has a problem. Quite honestly, both John and Deb both told me that as many years since they've been on here, they've never had a meeting. Kind of weird, so I'd make a motion that we reappoint them, and I will try to get ahold of Dave and make sure that he's good. If not, we'll circle back around to it. Okay?
I'll second that then.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Vinton Airport zoning, that's, that was John Stegelmeyer, and he was good, so make a motion that we reappoint John to that board.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Item 30, appoint civil rights coordinator. Isn't that John Lindeman?
It is.
Yep. That's what I thought. Are you still willing? Okay. So can you get a motion to reappoint John Lindeman to that civil rights coordinator position?
I'll go. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 For the official newspapers, we only got one formal letter, and that's from the Cedar Valley Times and Vinton Eagle. We did not get anything from the Gazette, who is the three current ones. But I haven't heard many complaints or anything regarding that. What?
Yeah, I'd say.
I'll make a motion to have the Gazette and the Vinton paper, or what do you call it?
Cedar Valley Times and the Vinton Eagle?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the three, more or less.
All right. Do you get a second on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Appoint trustee and alternate to Heartland Insurance Risk Group. I think that's one I've been on.
Yes, you and him.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to reappoint both of you.
I'm surprised that isn't under the other one.
This one has to be separate because it's not a board alternate. The, Heartland says it has to be the auditor's alternate.
Okay, okay. That's your motion?
Yep.
Do you get a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Over to the back. Appoint Heartland Safety Coordinator. Okay, that is usually, is that where we have Myron and Doug?
Doug Kearns.
And I think they're both good with that, so...
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint them both.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appoint county engineer pursuant to Iowa Code 309.17.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Myron Prezak.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Authorize person to sign USDA FSA documents on behalf of the county.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Gary.
I'm good with that. I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number 37, discuss and approve fiscal year '24 second budget amendment hearing date. You got a date for that?
I don't have one in mind. I don't.
Well, then I guess we'll, do we need to circle back to that, or we just throw something out there, or what?
I can text Haley.
Okay.
Can we circle back to 33, the safety coordinator one?
Sure.
Am I able to be on that one as well with Myron? Or can you only have two? Or, I guess I criticized something earlier, but he and I have been working on some trainings and things.
Sure.
We just joined the Iowa-Illinois Safety Council, and so I'm going to be helping him kind of maybe implement some work trainings for that group, for the countywide. Would it be possible for me to be part of that, too? Or...
I don't know why not. It would make sense.
Do we have to contact Heartland to see if we're limited to how many people? I, I don't know the rules on it. I'm sure you could, or replace...
I think Judy knows, I think Judy knows that I'm going to, she didn't say, you know...
Yeah, but just so we, when I have a number, I like to put it with the commission, so that way we know what we're limited to. So that way we can check with Judy and see if we're limited to how many people.
Why don't we, and I can contact Judy, I don't have a problem with that, and rather than circle back around?
What you're going to say, let me make a motion. I'll make a motion, we'll appoint Sue, HR Director, to the Heartland Safety Coordinators, along with Doug Kearns and Myron, as long as Heartland has no problem having three.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So it's in, Heartland's going to be in Heartland's ballpark now.
Right. And I'll contact Judy. Okay. All right. Fiscal year '25 budget work, I don't know, I've seen anything come through yet.
I don't know how many people have, the budgets were due on Friday. I know I've been helping Haley print out the forms and stuff like that, so we're getting everything situated, so...
Good.
I don't know how many, you haven't turned in your budget?
No.
So have you turned in your budget?
I did.
Okay.
In the 11th hour on Friday.
So, I know, I just know there's a few department heads that haven't, so I'm not sure how many have, but we're just going to continue putting that on, so that way, as things come in, as we need to, we can work on it, so...
Okay. All right. Makes sense. So Haley responded on that hearing date?
Oops. That's not what I wanted to do.
Hey, Alicia, it's Gina in the board meeting. Is Haley around for, to ask a question for the budget amendment hearing date?
Yes, just a second.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Hello. Do you have a date in mind for the budget hearing amendment?
I was thinking middle of February, so like February 13th or 6th, because I got to get, the department heads have to give me their stuff, so I figured let's go with February 13th at 9:30.
Does that work for you guys?
Sure.
All right.
Because I have all the re-estimated from the budgets coming in now.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can figure all those out, give us time to get them coordinated.
Okay. That works, that's all we needed.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Bye.
So can I get a motion to set that hearing date?
So I'll move for the February 13th to '24.
At 9:30 a.m.?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Reports. None? Okay. Old business, new business.
Friday, me and the sheriff, and Scott, Mike Day, and from Hatkins, Dave Rabelburg, we did the tower inspections. Went to all vice places, looked at the towers, here it comes. If you can back me up, I'm giving them the report on the towers.
Okay.
Besides being muddy.
It's supposed to be all like a...
They started last, I believe, 3rd or so, Rogers put the dish up. They, all that equipment and the cables and everything were there, so, I mean, they were, they thought they're really happy because they're a week ahead of schedule, even though this thing was supposed to be up and running by, what, February, March originally?
Oh, they're supposed to be on by now.
Yeah.
All in all, they're pleasantly surprised from what we thought we'd run into. Our consultant was with us, Mike Day. We really didn't note that many things that were not. There was a couple he was going to check in the drawings and make sure they had it the way the drawings were, but it was, everything actually looked very good. Now we just start installing equipment.
Did you get inside the buildings where you hit home?
Yes, we did.
Good.
We got in them all, except the old one here south of town here, that the lock don't work. So I suggested instead of hiring a locksmith to come in and, you know, fix it, I will stop and just cut the lock. Just put a regular door knob on it then.
So they got all the towers lit up and everything?
Yes. Towers are all lit.
Yep. Good. Give new stuff, let the old one on, providing the new LED system so that it doesn't shine in the neighbors' windows like the old ones did.
The generator crew were supposed to start this week, correct?
This week, they're supposed to...
To get them fired up.
Yeah, and then Bell Plain and Norway would then move to the new generators, and the main tower would move to a new generator, and then we'll schedule removal of the old If we could have got in the building at the main tower, we could have discussed the removal of that generator. It's quite a bit larger, and without some disassembly, it won't come through the door.
Hmm. Okay. Good.
When are they going to be finished up? I'm going to say it'll be the first of June. That's just my idea. Let's give them a little more time, then they're claiming, they're claiming April. I'd guess first of June.
I don't remember the numbers that they got to do for the radios, but it's a lot. Will you start thinking all the fire trucks?
Fire trucks, police cars, ambulances, there's a lot of equipment they've got to install. And they're coming here to install the equipment to the different departments instead of running all the stuff down to them.
And weren't they shooting half between 3:00 to 5:00 a day?
A day.
Vehicles done, and I thought...
Generally speaking, it's about, for a patrol car, if you start from the beginning, it's a little over a week. Could get long time. I realize all their changing radios, but...
Wow.
It runs under the seats, the wire runs under the carpet. There's a lot involved.
Okay. Wow. Three to five a day? And he says it takes a week. Per, oh, darn. Well, that'll remain to be seen, will it?
How many vehicles they got to do? Oh, jeez.
Oh.
Would be by 104 mobile.
I don't understand.
There's a lot of fire trucks and police cars and ambulances.
I don't remember. It's a lot.
I think we'll, I'm going to stick with my June first.
Because I know when we discussed that one, if they did just three a day, 100 vehicles a year, you're looking at three months.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus they've got to do all the tower installations, and then they've got to come and do dispatch, and not only install everything in dispatch, but remove all the old.
So secondary roads doing their own?
Yes.
They're putting their radios in there.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Okay.
Is that going to be a problem, do you think?
Secondary roads?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Well, public interest.
I just got one thing. I took Ron's advice, oh, Doug, oh, by the way, I went, and I took his advice, and I went to the Sheriff's Department to try to get a copy of the complaint about the Lada James thing, or Hannah or Jan's thing, we get dogs, and I couldn't get that, and so that wasn't completely truthful, because I had to have a subpoena to get the complaint. All I could get was a call for service. So I, but you did not tell me that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I mean, I, that's why I went in, and they said I had to have a subpoena to get the complaint, so now I'm going to be working on trying to do that, so I just, I'm just kind of curious to what all is going on, so that's why I'm still going to do it.
Okay.
There's more here. There's more to it, right? Somebody isn't being truthful.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Take a motion to adjourn that?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.